Good evening.
Line first class here.
Good evening. We, uh, this is a meeting of Athens City Council. This evening, Tuesday, September 3rd, 2013, we'll be starting our evening with committee meetings, which have a lot of information that we all need to pick up on. And we will probably run over our allotted half hour for the committee meeting, and so we will go right on in to our council meeting and dealing with the first reading particularly with all the ordinances. So, we're gonna begin with the Finance and Personnel Committee. And who's gonna start?
I can go ahead and start, and what we'll do is rotate amongst the council members.
Okay, so I've got it. Somebody's gonna take fire escape.
Correct. Yes, and there will be council member Butler and council member Patterson, who have, and myself, who are sharing the ordinances tonight for consideration. And the first one, the city hall fire escape, has to do with some additional repairs that we need to do to the fire escape. It is in the area of stringers, and we also need some painting. There'll be some labor costs involved, architectural oversight, some monies also for inspection, and a small amount of money for contingency fees. And the grand total of this is $65,580. So, the ordinance tonight will be introduced by council member Butler and will be for $66,000. And this will be one where we'll be declaring an emergency because these repairs are necessary as soon as possible.
Is this the, just a quick question, is this the fire escape, is the fire escape that was from here?
Right back there, yes. Part of the issue, of course, there is that if it's not functioning, then we'd have to really curtail how many people would be in here. We've got 94, we'd have to whittle it down to maybe four or something like that, so. Essentially, if you go back and look at it, it's got some rust spots, the treads are going. We did do some repairs on the landings, if you remember, last year, year before last?
About two years ago.
Two years ago.
Couple of years.
But the rest of it, we kind of held off on, but it's rusting through. There's actually, you know.
Okay, so it's all part of the same structure?
Yes.
So, you're saying, Mayor, that only four people could probably be on it at a time?
No, I, no, just that, if, that's the second egress. And if there's lost in the capacity, we'd have to whittle down quite a bit here. I'm just joking when I say four, but obviously, a lot, you know, you couldn't have a full room at that point without the fire marshal or the fire chief coming in saying, "This is probably not good."
And so, there are a number of occasions when we have more people in this building, or in this particular room, on nights when we have university students coming in for their classes, but then also, the big event will be Halloween, and this is used as kind of the, would you say, one of the command posts where people are able to come up, all the volunteers, and the police and sheriff's deputies are able to come up during the evening to take a few minutes break as they rotate on their duty throughout the night.
So, that's why the emergency part is to get this up and hopefully done before Halloween.
We'll hear Halloween a lot tonight.
We're getting ready, and that's good.
If there's a drinking game out there, go for it, guys.
No, but what we need to do is make sure all the facilities are in good repair.
Just one question, is this a total replacement or just repairs of the damaged parts?
It's repair, but it includes replacement of parts, and I think that's where the language is like that, so, okay.
So, the ordinance does indicate repair?
Okay. Thank you.
Rather than replacement, council, clerk of council Walker was able to change that and get it corrected in time, so thank you. Any other comments or questions from council members about the fire escape? The next one has to do with roof repairs needed at the fire headquarters, and as I understand, the estimate is for $92,500 for roof repairs, and I think council member Patterson, you have some update, or some additional information about that, or have you, on the roof repairs? No? Okay. And once again, I'm sorry, this one will be introduced by council member Butler.
Yeah, thank you. Brief update and discussions regarding the roof is that it's aging infrastructure and requiring updates, approximately $92,500. I believe there were some repairs made to the roof a number of years ago, but they're requiring replacement or fixing, is that correct?
Correct. We have the over 20-year-old rubber roof.
Okay, thank you.
And then this will do the up-to-date, energy-efficient new roofing.
And many of us-
This is the one that we want to use through the cooperative purchasing, through Department of Administrative Services. So, the estimate may be on the high end, because it's our understanding we can realize maybe up to a 20% savings by going through that program. And council passed back in 1988, I believe the clerk found for me, where we're authorized to participate in that cooperative purchasing program. That way, you get someone who's already prevailing, paying prevailing wage, vetted by the state on the state list, so.
And I believe a year or two ago, when touring the fire department, the chief had mentioned then that the roof was starting to demise and was gonna require some attention, so we had a little warning there.
Okay. If there are no other, any other questions?
Just also is suspending the roof?
Yes.
So, we can do this quickly?
I believe it will be.
As soon as possible.
Under the season, as it were. I don't mean to stir the feathers here, but under the purchase, cooperative purchasing fund, that means that you're probably not using local contractors. My understanding, actually, is you may get a contractor that's outside of the area, but they will utilize local workers. That's what I've been indicated by the architect that we're working with on this, whether it be local suppliers.
Okay.
Okay.
The next item that we have will be appropriations that we will be moving forward in an ordinance tonight, and there are two items under that. Council member Patterson will be moving that forward, and one of them is for the FEMA grant, which we had transferred some money to different departments earlier in the year with an ordinance for $146,300, but we are needing to appropriate that money to that account so that there are not negative balances. It's an audit requirement that we need to be taking care of both sides of the transaction. And then also, $8,500 for rescue hydraulic tools, and I think that's what you have the update on, council member Patterson.
Yeah, thank you. The hydraulic equipment, what it is, is basically, as some of you may be familiar, essentially that we're operating the jobs of length, as well as a ram, a couple of different devices used to extricate someone from a vehicle. Those tools in themselves work just fine, it's the pump that's needed, hydraulic pump, which is over 20 years old, needs to be replaced with a more efficient gas hydraulic pump needed for emergency services.
Okay. Any other questions or comments about the appropriations? Okay. The next ordinance that we'll be looking at tonight will be the non-union benefits ordinance, and what this does is amends the package for non-union personnel who are employees of the city. And what this, the language that council members have a copy of tonight with a new language in bold, is bringing the non-union benefits package into line with the language used in the other packages for our other employees in the city. It will do four things. One, it carries out, the carry, excuse me, it explains the carry-forward of compensatory time and the payout of comp time. It also looks at the language for payout of unused sick leave at the end of city employment, stating that it will be made, that payment of that unused leave will be made in the pay period following the employee's last pay. So, it allows adequate time to make sure that the calculations are correct. It then details a, the percentage split between city and county for the city positions in the municipal court judge's office. And the expenses for this are shared, and the judge of the municipal court, and the clerk and bailiff are at a percentage split where it's 60% for the city and 40% for the county. And then, the other item that will be taken care of in this ordinance will be the requirement of active work status for employees to receive a clothing allowance. So, those are the changes that are being made in the language. Are there any questions about that? Okay. The next ordinance that we'll be looking at tonight regards the university estates, and some of you may remember from our spring discussions, there are some roads in university estates that were needing improvement. They are within the city limits, but they are still private roads and have not been accepted by the city, so it made the repair of those roads with some bad conditions, made the repair of those complicated. And what we worked at earlier was an assessment process that we're going through now. We'll continue to have updates on that and a few additional ordinances, but the one that we're looking at tonight is for the bond release. And the city has reached an agreement for recapturing a portion of the bond that includes the improvements underway in university estates. And once this bond agreement's finalized, the bond will be fully released, and a portion of the bond, which is $55,942.50, will be used to defray project costs. And as I understand, when a future developer approaches the city to build the roadways in Phase 2, the city will require a new bond. And law director Lang, if you have some comments you had to share with us?
Yeah, I don't have a lot to add to that, I think you hit most of the high points. This would be just, of course, for the Phase 2 section of the roads, and we had talked in the past about trying to pursue the bond, and we were able to reach this settlement with the bond company, and in my opinion, it's certainly one worth entering into so that we can at least get a, you know, a nice kind of chunk of change here to help us go toward defraying the costs that ultimately, the citizens up there in the city are going to have to absorb to finally, once and for all, get these roads up to snuff.
Thank you. And thanks for your work on it, and city staff too, because I know this has taken some work and negotiations. And we will be requesting suspension on this one because the project is underway, the repairs are being done right now, so it's urgent or very critical that we get this, the bond release taken care of, so that we can get the monies in as quickly as possible. The next ordinance that we'll be considering will be the replacement of a police vehicle. And as I understand, one of the vehicles has, it's been declared totaled, is that-
Via the insurance company, we're waiting for the final documentation, but-
Okay, okay. And if I'm understanding right, the replacement cost is $38,000?
Based on what, we most recently had the police cruiser that was through the JAG grant, and that was the cost associated with the purchase and the decal-ing and the equipment that goes into it.
But, and then, as I understand, we do have a grant award, will that-
Well, I may have muddied the waters. What I was stating was the previous police cruiser was bought via that JAG grant.
Oh, okay.
And we're just now submitting for reimbursement, so there will be almost, was it close to $30,000 coming back into the general fund?
Correct, $29,000, right, $936.
So, it's really not the grant for this vehicle, it's the previous vehicle, but that'll give us money, cash flow to buy the new one.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the clarification. Good, well, that's good that we'll have that in there. Okay. And I, unless there are any other miscellaneous items for finance-
Did you mention the police vehicle purchase?
Yeah.
Okay, the purchase of it, okay.
Would you, Tina, do you have an update for us on the CCA?
You can do it now, we're doing counsel, doesn't matter to me.
Now would be fine.
Okay. I just thought I'd give you an update of where we're at with the CCA program, and I know, I think right before break, some, every couple of people had some questions, so I wanted to make sure I was able to answer those for you. It's, I give you all a flyer, and I just wanted to kind of break it down for you. So far, to date, CCA has deposited $152,328 into our account. I checked with them today, as of 3:00 this afternoon, our estimated distribution for September is gonna be $21,000. Since we started this program, we have created 155 new taxpayers for the city of Athens. From those 155 new accounts, we've collected $53,300 on 2012 current tax returns, and we've collected $25,101 delinquent 2011 tax returns. However, we're still in the process of collecting 90 unfilled 2011 returns on those 155 accounts. Adding in the amnesty program last year that we collected $52,000 on, our total to date is $303,728 total. So, we finally hit the $300,000 mark now at this point, so. We've had a couple bumps, been some learning curves for everybody. I think we're running a little smoother now, we've got through our second request. I think anyone that had issues, we've been able to handle and deal with. At this point now, we're just dealing with assessments, helping people understand why they're being assessed, and working through any penalty and interest issues, and getting as many counts taken care of as we can. I work with CCA on a daily basis at this point. We're constant, in constant contact with email or phone, and we haven't had no issues for the last three or four weeks, so I'm hoping we're on a smooth path right now, at least until our next step, which we'll have to, at that point, sit down and decide what process we want to go forward with. And I wanted to let you know as well that during all this process, we've been dealing with HB 5 as well, and there is a meeting September 17th in Columbus, that the House of Representatives are going to be discussing municipal income tax, and HB 5 will be the majority of the agenda. We have a conference call this Friday to determine which tax administrators in the state are going to be testifying during that meeting, so have more information after Friday, but we do plan on attending that meeting in Columbus on the 17th.
What was the date on that again?
17th of September. I think it's 10 o'clock. Or 1 o'clock, sorry. Today's was at 10. They're doing a around-the-state tax tour right now, and it's on all taxes except municipal taxes, and municipal tax is the 17th in Columbus. They were in Bowling Green today.
Well, thank you, Tina, for leadership on both of these issues. The CCA, what, if people out there in the audience haven't heard about it before, is a collection agency that has access to federal tax records, which our city, as I understand, does not have that. And so, what we were able to do is work with that, contract with them, the city of Athens and CCA, to look at where there might be disparities for people who weren't aware and weren't paying income tax to the city that was due. So, what we're seeing now with this influx of the $300,000 is a collection over a period of years where we're collecting the back taxes, which has been a wonderful increase in revenue for us this year for the city, but which will likely level out next year. So, we'll have further updates for you in the fall about how this, you know, leveling out of the income, you know, will impact revenues later on during the year. And then, the Senate Bill 5, we had talked about earlier this year, and Tina's presented to us several times, and Tina's also taken a leadership position on that by testifying at certain points with the state. And what's being recommended at the state level are some possible changes for how we transact money here at the local level, and whether or not it might be collected in a more centralized way, and might be oversimplifying parts of it, but-
Actually, they've, yeah. They've eliminated the centralized collection part of it, but it's major changes on how you assess the tax and what you're allowed to tax and what you're not allowed to tax. And to, I, the reason I broke this out for you is I wanted to kind of show, the 2012 collection on tax, the $53,300, with the 155 new accounts, and we're still actually setting up accounts at this point, we haven't identified all of them yet, we're still working through the massive databases they're sending us, and creating these new accounts. We're looking at expecting around $50-plus thousand a year. I wanted to track that as it came in, so we were able to identify what a yearly impact it should be, and show that for one year's taxes for those 155 accounts, we collected $53,000 in revenue. So, that way, you can look at 2013, anticipate we'd have about additional $50,000, plus all of the payment plans that we have set up through CCA.
Okay, great, that's great to have that identified. Any other questions, council members?
Just comment on a job well done and continuing that job. I know you, there's still more to deal with, but we really appreciate the extra effort that it's taken to get to this point.
I just want to make sure every taxpayer feels that they're getting a fair assessment and a fair shake at it, you know? I don't want anyone to be upset or, you know?
And that's a good point, is your office has been helpful in all these confused dealings, and rather than being judgmental, you've always been helpful with our taxpayers, so.
I've tried to explain to anyone who's come in our office, when we came to council and we asked for this program, I remember sitting here and saying, "It's not because I think people are out there not paying their tax." We knew the majority of these individuals that we were going to identify didn't know they were supposed to be paying this tax. I mean, and it's been, you know, 99% of people walked through the door if they'd known they'd have been paying it, so, you know, our goal is to, you know, respect that. We completely believe that was what was going on, and, you know, when we went looking for this program, it was just a tool to help them and us. And, you know, we knew this, collecting the delinquent taxes, the back taxes, was going to be the burden. And now that we've been able to identify them, we have them set up in the system, we'll be sending them tax forms every year, it'll be a lot easier helping them go forward and stay current with their taxes.
Tina, I also wanted to thank you for your leadership on going to Columbus. That takes some guts to do that and to testify.
I was scared.
And I really, I think all of us here in the city appreciate that because we know that you guys are up there, you know, testifying to the concerns of those of us down here.
I was well-prepared, because the first question out the door is, they asked me how we distributed our general fund, why it was broke out like that, and I flipped right to my notebook and told them every single fund and what percentages went in, and then they were just all like, that eyes are that big around, everyone was scared to ask me any questions. When I left, Representative Barnes chased me down the hallway. So, I was a little shocked at first, but, yeah, it actually opened a lot of doors for us. We were invited to a lot of interested party meetings afterwards, so we've had a really good voice in what's going on. We have a lot of respect from the chairman on the Ways and Means Committee right now, and we've had a lot of input in the overall product that they're getting ready to come forward with. It's a lot better than the original, there's still some issues, you win and lose, but that's, I guess, the way it works.
Compromise, yeah, situation, but thanks for being there.
Thank you.
Part of it is that she has credibility, because we're in a, we're in a position where we've had data from net operating loss in the previous years, and we can actually get substantiate what would be the difference by reinstituting that. And again, we haven't gone, your numbers are well-worked throughout, very meticulous, and as a result, she's, she's known for a high municipal league as well as in the state house as well, so it's working out quite nicely. The credibility's there, and this is very good.
University helped a lot too. I think half of the representatives up there owe you alums, so we get a lot of credit for that. There was one representative up there, Representative Booze, and he was just hammering everyone on their numbers, and every single person got up there, he just constantly harassed them about everything they said. And when it came his turn, I just took a deep breath, and he said, "Well, that's exactly what I've been asking for." I was like, "Okay." But it was a little nerve-wracking, but we got through it just great, so, but thank you all. Without your guys' support, I wouldn't be going, so.
Thanks, Tina.
If we were leaders, we wouldn't, we wouldn't have said anything. Trust me.
Thanks, Tina.
Okay. That's it for Finance and Personnel. City and Safety Services Committee, we have several issues to talk about also.
Thank you, Mr. President. Some of these are issues and ordinances that we were discussing, that we've addressed in the past, and I think the key watchword here is safety. So, in considering issues regarding Halloween, the intent behind all of these is safety, and to help create an environment where revelers are going to be safe, and that the people working and assisting are going to be safe as well. That's my understanding. So, initially, the first one we're looking at is creating a glass-free zone, and we received some feedback from the police chief on tweaking and amending an ordinance that's on the books, and so essentially, this is going to be establishing the glass-free zone and then empowering the police department with language that then has a penalty attached. So, we're looking at, within the ordinance, you can see the bold print that goes in the details about definition of a glass-free zone, and the direction given to us by the city service safety director in defining that area, and then the special events, and then establishing a minor misdemeanor for the consequences. Any questions on that or discussion?
Does, member Butler, does the, the language explain fines, et cetera? I don't see that here, but-
Under C, it's a, a minor misdemeanor.
And so, that-
That covers it?
It does. And it really just gives an empowerment to enforcement. I would say 99 and more times out of 100, it's, you put that glass down or you go back in, and they all do, but they didn't have this mechanism in place to proceed.
In other words, if they need to cite a section of code, they have now a section of code to cite.
This is, is separate from when we establish a glass-free zone during Halloween or Boogie on the Brick.
This is part of it.
So, this is, when we establish a glass-free zone, this is allowing the police to put that penalty with it, so it's helping to strengthen the glass-free zone when we pass it for parties.
And it makes it so that we don't have to come back to council every time the police need to establish something for an uptown event, the service safety director's empowered just to go ahead and declare with specificity, in this exact, you know, geographic area, these exact times, you know, a glass-free zone will be in effect. So, council doesn't have to do it every time.
We should do that for each one of these, to tell you the truth. A little ordinance that we just pass, and then it's kind of packaged. We do go through these multiple ordinances quite a bit, every time we have a due, a city due.
Well, that's your responsibility.
So, city council is essentially ceding authority that it used to have to administration?
Well, again, it's, it came directly from the police chief asking for language that would be acceptable so for, on the enforcement side, so we worked with the law director's office on establishing.
And one of the problems you run into with, you know, if there were to be a situation where, you know, if, you know, a council obviously only meets when it meets, and so if something were to come up on relatively short notice where public safety and health would dictate that we should have not a lot of broken glass potentially in a certain area, this gives the service safety director some flexibility to be able to say, "Okay, we can go ahead and ban glass in this area during these times," even if it's something that may come up on relatively short notice, that council wouldn't be able to act. So, for, I would argue, from kind of a public health and safety standpoint, it's probably a good thing to do.
Does this situation come up much? I mean, we pass glass-free zones a lot here. I'm just sort of being the devil's advocate here.
That's, I hear what you're saying.
Council can do it at once.
Essentially, it comes into play when you close the streets. So, really, the first, the first cause is you declaring this closed street, whether it's International Streets Fair, Halloween, or something of that nature. After that- After that, the, realize the other ordinances come to play, you know, noise, which you'll discuss as well, I think it's leaving tonight. You know, vending, those are all within your powers. This was also always put in as one of the ordinances.
Right.
But it was the enforceability of it as well as the citation, the availability cited. The extra section where it's up to the service safety director, it gives us some play of where we can actually move that, that zone around a little bit. But again, it's not like we're going to just say, let's pick a glass-free, a place and call it glass-free for the weekend or something like that. It's not that arbitrary.
Right.
I could see being able to utilize this on certain multi-house party street events that are not sanctioned by the city, but just to protect our rights of way. It's just one of the scenarios.
You remember, probably about five, six years ago, we had horses injured by glass.
Yeah, right.
There are times, as has been pointed out, that council does declare something a glass-free zone, but there are also times when we're not involved. And what this ordinance does, as I understand it, is it allows the enforcement of that ordinance. Even though council declares it, I don't, we don't go out there and enforce it. We're authorized, we're allowing the police force to enforce it in our stead. And we're also giving them, the administration, the opportunity to use it at other times.
Any other questions?
No.
Second regarding Halloween, and I believe Member Pappy will be addressing the ordinance on this, this evening, and is more than welcome to discuss it at this moment if you'd like, or I can continue.
Go ahead.
Okay. So regarding Halloween, we always include discussion and ordinance to close the streets. So we define the location of the street closing and the time that that's enforced. Followed up with suspension of the noise ordinance so that we don't disobey our own rules with excessive noise. So there'll be a temporary ban for the noise ordinance. And then lastly, we have an issue, again, I think, which Member Pappy will discuss the ordinance of later, which is the peddling. So we suspend the enforcement of vending and peddling and soliciting during Halloween. I think one of the nice things about this particular ordinance that we do is that we have no registration fee for charitable organizations and civic groups and nonprofit organizations. So within the ordinance, there's a definition of the costs and the space and the permission, the permitting process. So that covers.
And I would just add that for those folks that don't usually vend in our city during other times but like to come in for Halloween, that they make sure that they know what the rules are and when they're supposed to be doing those, by seven days in advance to have their permits and things in order. So I, you know, I just think if you're not a regular vendor in the city of Athens and you want to come and participate at Halloween, have your ducks in a row before you get here.
Right. Thank you, Representative Patterson.
There were some other modifications I just wanted to point out to you. And again, the police chief worked with the law director's office related to noise. In the past, it had stated, abated during, during the event, the uptown area, which kind of tied their hands as related to enforcement when they would get other noise, you know, calls. And so the way it's worded now was from those sound stages that are sanctioned. So that, again, allows them a greater level of enforcement as needed.
Thank you.
I would also request that we suspend these at second reading in order to have them adopted prior to October 26th.
Okay, thank you. And again, historically speaking, and those that have been around longer than me can add to it, too, but I believe that these came out of the Clean and Safe Halloween Committee, that there was an attempt to really make sure that there was a communication between administration and people that were going to be enjoying the Halloween experience. So I think that there was discussion and collaboration on how to make this a safe event. Is that correct?
Yes, and they indicated to us that in the past, everybody was just milling about, so there wasn't really. This gives them activities by having even the two stages, they feel like it separates it out throughout the street. So we've already had our first meeting with the Clean and Safe Halloween Committee, and they're doing their planning.
Thank you. Next on our, I'm sorry, Representative Patterson.
If we can go back to vending real quick, I have a question about the vending. Is the vending, in past years vending during the Halloween event is taking place on East State Street, or West State Street, rather, and I believe on West Union, as well? Is that what's going to take place as well with the vending setups?
Again, it states those vendors currently holding a license to vend on East Union are allowed to operate at a time and a location determined by the service safety director. We're in discussion as, you know, as we look at logistics in terms of best placement, but we think we're going to be leaving them there, essentially.
Thank you.
Any other questions about this aspect of Halloween? So additionally on the agenda for the City and Safety Services Committee is the Ayuba-sponsored youth or children's trick-or-treat. And again, I believe Member Pappy is, Councilmember Pappy will be bringing that up this evening, and I don't know if you want to discuss it now, or?
We can, we can discuss it briefly. Basically, I think for people to know that because of where Halloween falls this year, and our big event is the weekend before, so the 26th is the Saturday. And then the closure of the street for children will be October 28th, Monday. So that's a little bit trick-or-treating around the city is always an interesting. It happens usually the Thursday before Halloween, but Halloween falls kind of differently this year. So anyways, it'll be Monday, the 28th.
This is for the uptown closure.
Uptown businesses, evening. And you get your wish. Trick-or-treat really is on October 31st, that's your.
Wow.
The citywide, so the big kid ones on the weekend, 26th, 27th. The little kids uptown is the 28th, and the citywide one.
Door-to-door.
Door-to-door is the 31st.
Very cool.
So Ayuba's, again, is on a Monday night, will be that Monday.
Monday night.
Yes, so we need to be mindful and route.
Up here in Chambers?
Only if they come up here, unless you want to, you want to hold your meeting out there.
You know, I've often thought it's not a bad idea, and we haven't done it. It's just to get the orange bucket and sit out in front of City Hall, because the garage is free, so.
Yeah, so they'll have to go there.
It's, it's very interesting. And Ayuba, for those new to Athens, is the Athens Uptown Business Association, and they've been the sponsors of this, and it's just, it's grand to see all the kids. It's also a big traffic jam uptown on that night, so beware.
Come early and get ready.
Well, we do close the street.
I was going to say, there's no traffic.
It's just around becomes a traffic jam, yes. But pre-parking, pre-parking in the parking garage.
I don't believe I have any miscellaneous unless the mayor's office has.
No, no miscellaneous, I don't have any.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. We're going to go on, we're really, this didn't take as long as I thought it was going to. Do we have some people that we're going to cut out?
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
I have a long drive home, so. Does she have any questions for me?
Thank you.
Thanks, Tina, for your work.
Yeah, just thank you, that's all. We obviously have a quorum here, all council members present. We do have disposition of minutes that we want to do fairly quickly. Minutes from the special session on July 8th and the regular session on July 15th. We'd like to accept those minutes. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
All those in favor of accepting the minutes for July 8th and July 15th signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. We have adopted, we have accepted those minutes. Communications from other officials. I have eight communication. Jennifer Cochran, our new council member, has volunteered to take Ilahu's position on the tree commission.
Wonderful.
There is a position, tree commission is supposed to operate with a council member present and a non-voting member, by the way. So Jennifer has sacrificed herself.
I have a communication.
Any comment regarding that? No? Okay, go ahead.
This is a communication I received from some members of the Athens County League of Women Voters. They want to invite the administration and city council to a watershed summit this Saturday, September the 7th, 2013, from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., Fine Arts Auditorium at the ridges, Ohio University Athens. The building is handicap accessible. It's co-sponsored by the Athens County League of Women Voters and the Village of Amesville Mayor Gary C. Guzman, with support from the Athens Community Bill of Rights Committee. And the summit celebrates our recent successes in protecting and restoring water, local watersheds, looks at future threats, and suggests strategies. So the public is invited, and it's free. Can't beat that. Except for lunch. There's a $10.00 lunch fee.
Representative Butler?
Thank you, Mr. President. I also have just a brief communication, just to acknowledge my apologies to John Spotforth, who had sent some letters to us while we were on our break or our recess over the month of August. So I am in receipt of these letters, and he is just acknowledging some concerns about some trees and some slippage in his backyard. I do know that Member Nilesley has visited, Member Patterson's visited, I've visited. I am aware of his concerns and just wanted to acknowledge that I am in receipt of his letters.
And I think there were several other letters in the packet about some, some code issues that he was concerned about, at least in the packet that I saw. In addition to the concerns about the runoff, so we'll talk about that. And we do have in our possession some plans for this city to accept a zoning designation for some property being brought into the city. Sixty-day waiting period will be up the 10th of August, and then there'll be a public hearing scheduled. Council will.
September or August?
I'm sorry?
September 10th?
The sixty days ran.
Oh, ran already.
Oh, I see.
But this is our first meeting.
Oh, so. It's done, it's done, okay. So we'll put it on our agenda. Yes, Representative Patterson?
I have a brief announcement as well. The Commission on Disabilities on September 19th will be holding two events. The first of which will be the Challenge by Choice, in which individuals within our community have been invited to take on a disability. And more importantly, at 6:00 at the community center is Disability Speaks, which, again, is a Commission on Disabilities event where those who took on a disability with the Challenge by Choice will come and describe their experiences of having to spend two to four hours with a disability of different types. And so it's kind of a very small glimpse of what it must be like to have to navigate through our environment with a disability. The Disability Speaks is open to the public, again, 6:00. It'll be in Activity Room B, I believe, at the community center.
And what was the date again?
September 19th. And just another announcement just to make real quick, just to throw out there, the Commission on Disabilities this year is 10 years old. And so, and it's been very active throughout its existence. That said, there will be a series of meetings, essentially a retreat, that will be taking place on the 20th of September, 20th and the 21st, from 6:00 to 9:00 in the community center on the 20th, and from 8:30 to 12:30, again, in the community center on the 21st, Saturday morning. And what it'll be is essentially an open focus group to where we can start looking at the 2003 goals and objectives and see what changes we need to make within the commission to project ahead to our next 10 years or beyond, as the commission continues to advocate for individuals' disability in the city of Athens. Thank you.
And a very active advocate in the city of Athens. Something that we can all be proud of. Reports and communications from elected officials.
Steve, do you have participants for the Challenge by Choice yet? Do you leave the hall canvassing for that?
We have been canvassing. I can't give you a firm number on how many we have, but we have a fair number of citywide individuals. We've made a lot of requests, we've got a lot of maybes, but we're still looking to find individuals there if you would like to take on disabilities. I believe you have already.
I have, I have in the past, let me think about it, maybe as well.
Certainly, I have done it in the past as well, so I'll throw down the gauntlet to any of my colleagues on city council for anyone who wants to take on a disability on that afternoon. Please contact me, and we can probably make that happen. A lot of university officials as well. And this year, it's kind of interesting, we had a professor come forward and say that they have a class in media arts that they wanted to work on a project, and we thought this is a beautiful possibility for having some experiential learning take place where they're taking on a disability, five individuals. So the numbers are growing, we're still working on it.
Communication-wise, I did receive two letters from somebody from the, members of the Far East side for on Charles Street. Their concern, of course, is the Integrated Service Building that's going up. Again, the Integrated Service residents that they're trying to put on Charles would be towards replacing the car wash that's there. It's in a B3 zone. So some of the, some of the concerns about erosion of the R1 zone is not, really doesn't fit. Traffic issues, of course, is another matter entirely, but traffic is increasing all the time. Just to acknowledge that we have received that, the Title 41 is being, is going to be vetted. It's really in its initial stages right now. But again, the concept is that there's not going to be any variances required for this building.
Are not, did you say that there are not any variances?
They plan to build it without any variances required, which would be basically a commercial on the first floor and residential on the second floor. With the, the way I've been told, and again, we haven't seen the plans, they're still on the drawing board. I think they haven't even bought the property yet, but they have an option to buy. But I'm just acknowledging the fact that there are concerns from some of the neighbors there. I've also talked to some neighbors who think it's not a problem as well, so there's a mixed review on that. You've mentioned the watershed summit, so I don't have to go and talk about that. I know tomorrow, you've probably got one of these cards, the sneak preview for the Arts West. The new chair is there. And if you want to pick up a few, I think it's at Rees Dorf, about $185, so. Let's see, the other, so that's tomorrow, again, at Arts West, 4:00 to 6:00. So I guess if you want to see what they've been doing and how it's improved, or how it's changed at least. I'm also aware that September 21st, there's going to be a Great American Cleanup. There's a scrap tire drop-off event at Dewayne National Forest Headquarters. They're going to try collecting 1,200 tires, and as soon as they get all 1,200 tires, they're closed. So if you have tires that you need to guard up, get over there. Tires not to exceed 54 inches, which probably means a track tire, 16 inches with. If there's more questions, you can get in touch with me about that. But again, that's just one of the events occurring. Of course, you noticed the Oxbow Bridge is open. We're still working on, of course, Lancaster and Columbus Road, that'll take longer. University States, haven't been up there since they started moving the asphalt, but I've seen the pictures. I get reports of what's going on there, so we're busy. I don't know, is Coach Marcus Creek construction going to, bridge going to happen, no?
No, ODOT had to let that a second time, we're still waiting to hear if they have a word.
Okay, that's on the.
It's just going to get better at University States. It's a little rough right now, but this is, it's working.
And I've gotten feedback on the paving on streets. People love Morris. I've gotten a lot of feedback from bicyclists especially, that really use Morris a lot between Bike Path and other parts of the city, and they love it.
In this phase of safer routes, the school's done pretty much. The north, south Lancaster by the middle school, the gap between, on Second Street, between Central and Courier, and I believe Watts is done as well. I think those are the three major ones we're doing. Do you have anything to add?
Just that the patient people in Pat and Arden in that area of the waterline, that would, they'll get their repave in here in the next two weeks also, so.
So that's all.
A busy summer.
The bridge looks great.
Was that your report?
That is certain.
I'd like to echo what I just heard Representative Butler say, and that is that, you know, my office looks right down on Oxbow Bridge. my office looks right down on Oxbow Bridge, and it looks phenomenal to me. Beautiful job, beautiful job with the inner artwork, or not artwork, but the structure arches that mimic the outer rails. Looks really nice.
And there actually is artwork planned for underneath the bridge, not just graffiti, but real artwork. Planned artwork.
The administration is planning a dedicate -- we're not calling it a dedication, we're calling it a...
Maybe. Maybe we are calling it a -- we didn't do a reopening because no time.
Right. But so everyone can come, because below, there's a lot of good work being done and improvements, so.
Oh, that was a bungee jump, no?
And that's going to be there later in October.
The bungee jump?
I don't think we should make jokes like that.
And wait till you see it when the lights get on, and then I can wait for the Astronomical Society to start calling.
Well, you're doing all the right things. You're facing down.
I know.
That's all.
Anything else?
No report.
Lotterie Line?
Mr. President, I don't have anything to add, other than what I said in committee.
Okay. We then will move on to ordinances, some of which should sound familiar. Ordinance 113, an ordinance authorizing repair of the fire escape on the city building and declaring an emergency. Member Butler?
Thank you, Mr. President. I believe that it is requested to move to suspend this ordinance due to the tightness and safety and concerns that were addressed during our committee meeting.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to consider this ordinance under suspension of the rules. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay. Member Butler, the rules have been suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt, and I can -- want me to discuss first, or move to adopt?
Whichever.
Okay. I'll move to adopt this ordinance.
Second?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, this particular ordinance, we discussed in committee earlier this evening, and we heard from the city's safety director regarding the replacement of stringers, inspection process, and then the cost of, I believe, as it states here, $66,500. And this will be from the general fund, is that correct, lands and buildings? And we're replacing, or I'm sorry, addressing the needs of a dilapidated fire escape in this room.
Do we have any idea of the timeline involved here? I don't. If not...
I don't. And I bet we do want it done, as you know, prior in advance of the Halloween, but anything that would affect the operations of this, it also affects the second floor as well, we'll be in touch and communication within this building.
We have suspended the rules, and we have a motion and a second to accept ordinance 113. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ordinance is accepted, and the rules have been suspended. Moving on to ordinance 10113, an ordinance authorizing roof replacement for the fire station headquarters on Columbus Road and declaring an emergency. Again, introduced by Councilmember Butler.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, we discussed this earlier in committee, and under the impression that we should request suspension of the rules for this particular ordinance.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules. All those in favor of suspending the rules signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The rules have been suspended. Member Butler?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to move to adopt ordinance 101-13.
Second?
Thank you. Again, we discussed this earlier in committee, and regarding the timeliness of the weather and the needs to replace a 20-year-old aging rubber roof, it's imperative. It's appearing to cost $92,500, and again, this is from the general fund. Thank you, Mr. President.
This was the amount the service safety director was hoping was going to be...
Actually, less, if we go through the contracting system.
We were hoping, yeah. So, we're approving this amount, but expecting...
Up to.
Up to that, yeah. Okay. We have a motion to accept ordinance 10113 under suspension of the rules. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Ordinance 10113 has been accepted. Ordinance 11213, an ordinance amending the 2013 appropriation ordinance. Member Patterson?
Thank you, Mr. President. This ordinance will have to go through several different steps, but to begin with, we're going to -- I want to move to amend ordinance 10213.
Second?
The amendment is needed because there's -- it's missing 50 cents.
I think I have it in my pocket. I don't.
We need to amend it any further?
Just that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to amend ordinance 10213 by the amount of 50 cents. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ordinance has been amended.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to move to suspend the rules for ordinance 10213.
Second?
Thank you. The reason for the suspension, again, is that we need to put the money into this account, because it currently has a negative balance.
Okay. We have -- is that a motion to suspend?
That is a motion to suspend.
Do we have a second? Oh, we have a second? I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I wasn't paying attention. All those in favor suspending the rules on ordinance 10213 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay. Member Patterson, the rules have been suspended. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to adopt ordinance 10213.
Second?
Thank you. This particular ordinance has two sections to it, or two elements within this ordinance. The first one is that with the FEMA funding, the reimbursement that came from the 2012 derecho, which was for $146,300.50, which we had previously had entered fund transfers going into several different accounts, to kind of refresh everyone, the general fund 101, Street 220, Recreation 270, Water 740, and Sewer 750 is where the money's went. So, this is, again, just to appropriate that funding into the FEMA grant fund. That's the first part. The second part of this is to appropriate $8,500, which will be used by the fire department to replace, again, an aging hydraulic pump. It's the pump itself. The equipment works just fine, but it's time to replace this valuable piece of equipment used to save lives, to extricate people from -- that might be trapped inside vehicles.
Thank you. Any questions about the ordinance? All those in favor of accepting ordinance 10213 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. We have it. The ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Moving on to ordinance 10313. Member Nilesley?
Thank you, Mr. President. As explained earlier, this is an ordinance amending the fringe benefit package for non-union personnel, and it will take care of language so that the non-union personnel is consistent with other city employees' benefit statements, and it addresses carryforward of compensatory time, payout of unused sick leave, the percentage split between city and county for the municipal court staff, and the requirement of active work status for employees to receive a closing allowance.
This is first reading. Ordinance 10413. This is introduced by Councilmember Butler.
Thank you, Mr. President. Did you want to read it first, or...
Yes. You can just read the title, and we'll discuss it if there's any. We've already -- you've already talked about it.
Right. I didn't know if you were going to read it the top first, or...
I'll go ahead. I'm sorry. I've got papers spread all over here. An ordinance amending Athens City Code Title IX, General Regulations, Chapter 9.06.04, possession of opened or container -- opened bottle or container of beer or liquor to establish a glass-free zone.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Member Butler?
Thank you. Again, we discussed this in committee earlier, and the basic point of this is to empower the police department. We had some suggestions from the police chief with how to do so, so that we had the ability for citation and something that was on the books then. This will create a minor misdemeanor for people that are in violation of this, and it goes into detail defining a glass-free zone and empowering the service safety director to establish from time to time that definition of the glass-free zones. We also are looking at the definition of city property, city-owned property, and a definition of the glass container, container of any configuration of the capacity when empty of more -- when empty of more than one-half ounce that is made of glass, crystal ceramic, or any other material likely to shatter when dropped onto or struck by a harder material. And then, lastly, glass-free zone means that a portion of the city designated as such by the service safety director for purposes of maintaining public health and safety during special events. And I don't believe this is necessary for suspension. Is that correct?
Not until the second reading, that along with all the other Halloweens.
Thank you.
Ordinance 10513, an ordinance banning parking and closing that portion of Court Street from Mulberry to Carpenter on October 26th and 27th, 2013, in anticipation of a large number of people converging on downtown Athens Halloween weekend. Member Pappy?
So, this is part of our package for Halloween, and what the city needs to do to maintain safety and manage the large number of crowds. So, we close Court Street from Mulberry to Carpenter, a portion of -- on the 26th and 27th into the morning.
Is that the ordinance we've used all the time? It doesn't say anything about timing?
No.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Ordinance 10613, ordinance -- oh, I'm sorry. Ordinance 10813, an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code, Chapter 11.04, vending, peddling, and soliciting to allow vending in a designated area on October 26th and 27th, 2013 Halloween weekend. Excuse me? That's what I started? Okay. We're on 106. Ordinance 10613, an ordinance establishing a glass-free drinking container zone on Court Street and adjoining sidewalks between Union and State on October 26th and 27th, 2013 Halloween weekend.
Thank you, Mr. President. We'll be looking -- this particular ordinance, again, was addressed in committee, and then we looked at the new legislation that will empower the police department to enforce this particular ordinance, and this will be part of the package that Councilmember Pappy was just addressing for the Halloween weekend. Thank you.
We'll move on to ordinance 10713, an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code, Section 13.04.10, unnecessary noise for scheduled bandstand performances hosted by the Clean and Safe Halloween Committee on October 26th and 27th, 2013 Halloween weekend.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, this is part of the package regarding safety and suggestions made by the Athens Clean and Safe Halloween Committee, looking at the temporary suspension of unnecessary noise, since there will be two music grandstands at each end of Court Street. Thank you. Oh, Member Patterson?
I have probably a similar question to that of the President, and that is, maybe I'm confusing this with other events that have taken place in the city that did have, you know, discreet times on these ordinances. Has this never had a time associated with it, or is it just blanket from the 26th to the 27th?
It has been in the past time, but right now, we're working with some flexibility on it, just because we have closed the streets earlier, and we -- and usually, we try shutting it down, you know, about the same time the bars close, 1:30 at the latest. How long it takes, of course, is another matter. Sometimes it takes a while to push them out of the way. In terms of this one, particularly for the noise, unnecessary noise, the conversation, of course, is that this is suspending it for the scheduled bandstand performances. What we were seeing is that we had peripheral parties adjacent to Court Street, and therefore, you know, they could point at the thing, saying, "You suspended it. The noise orange uptown, and therefore, we can have our party on, let's say, West Union or Washington, for instance, or something like that, just off Court, but close enough to -- because we have it a little bit nebulous, but we're just whittling this down." Time-wise, we get a pretty hard set on it during the actual tactical side of it, but again, it comes down to setting up the barriers, getting the street closed, so we've kind of left ourselves a little wiggle room on that.
I think it said as necessary.
Not necessary to have actual times in the ordinance itself.
And so, Mayor, you're also clarifying that this is specific to sound stage?
Yes.
Sanctioned by and erected for the Athens Clean and Safe Halloween Committee does not...
Not for the impromptu...
Correct.
...party that's going on on, let's say, East-West State or something like that.
Thank you.
Between, let's say, college and, or rather, Congress and Court.
Thank you.
That's what we're trying to, you know, that, you know, there's, you know, again, it could get loud. And again, it's still coming to force at that time, especially if it's peripheral to the party.
Thank you.
I believe that was the conversation that was occurring. And again, this is still working out. We're still, you know, they've only had one meeting, they'll have many more meetings before it's all done.
Okay. Ordinance 10813 again, an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code, Chapter 11.04, vending, peddling, and soliciting to allow vending in a designated area on October 26th and 27th, 2013 Halloween weekend. Member Pappy?
So, we discussed this earlier in a committee meeting, but I just want to reiterate, prospective vendors shall register their name, address, and items to be vented with the code office on or before October 24th by 2:00 p.m. So, I'm -- there are some rules to follow, again. Not that out-of-towners will be watching us tonight, but there are rules that vendors need to respond to.
Moving on to ordinance 10913, ordinance closing a portion of Court Street on Monday, October 28th, 2013, from 5:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m., for trick-or-treat hosted by the Athens Uptown Business Association. Introduced by Councilmember Pappy.
This is not part of the package. This is part of the package for, as the mayor said, the younger folks in our community to come downtown and be hosted by the Athens Uptown Business Association, and they have fun activities, and it's just a fun place to come and trick-or-treat on Court Street.
And again, in the past, we didn't do this. This is about the fifth or sixth year it's been put into place, mostly because it was getting so popular, you have lots of kids running around... getting so popular, you have lots of kids running around, and it became a dangerous logistic problem just to have the cars going up Court Street. So it's grown, and it is a fun time. And I say that because you watch the kids interacting, you watch the parents interact outside the school system, so. And sometimes, they're all in costumes.
Ordinance 110-13. An ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code Title VII, Section 7.05.26B1, City Garage Metered Parking Rates and Regulations on Monday, October 28th, 2013, from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. for the Athens Uptown Business Association's trick-or-treat.
So, again, this is part of the, the younger kids' trick-or-treat event, and it's a way to encourage folks to come downtown and park free of charge and have, so, have it done in an orderly fashion.
As best possible.
As best possible.
And we move on to ordinance 111-13. An ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into a settlement agreement for release of the bond provided to assure Phase II street and storm drain improvements associated with the University Estate, associated with University Estates, and declaring an emergency. Member Nigley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to suspend ordinance 111-13.
Second.
And the reason for this being that the University Estates improvements and repairs are currently going on.
We have a motion to suspend the rules on ordinance 111-13. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Remember, Nigley, the rules have been suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move adoption of ordinance 111-13.
Second.
And, yeah, this particular ordinance will authorize the Service Safety Director to enter into a settlement agreement for a bond, and what it will allow us to do is recapture a portion of the bond that includes the improvements that are underway in the University Estates development. The amount of money that the city will receive is $55,942.50 for use to help defray the project costs for the University Estates roads improvements.
Any comment, Mayor?
And thank you for the work of the Law Director's Office for the negotiations. I think most of the time, from what we've heard, extracting bonds or getting parts of bonds is very difficult action, so it worked out.
Good. So, all those in favor of accepting ordinance 111-13, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Ordinance 111-13 is accepted, with the rule suspended. And finally, ordinance 112-13. An ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to purchase a replacement police cruiser and declaring an emergency. Member Butler.
Thank you, Mr. President. I apologize, I didn't recall or catch if this needed to be suspended. Was there a need to act quickly on this?
I would lean towards suspending it myself, since there's an emergency clause on this, I believe.
Okay.
And it means we're short one vehicle right now.
Okay, thank you. Having heard that, Mr. President, at this moment, I would like to move to suspend the rules for ordinance 112-13.
Second.
We have a motion to suspend, and a second, to suspend the rules on ordinance 112-13. All those in favor of suspending the rules signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Member Butler, the rules have been suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to move to adopt ordinance 112-13.
Second.
And quite simply, there's not a whole lot to acknowledge, other than there's a need for replacement of a police cruiser, which will cost approximately $38,000, and this would be from the general fund police transaction class 500.
Do you have any comments about this?
The police cruiser.
The cruiser, they take, they could take up to four months in order to order, and then get them equipped and what have you, so I indeed would request that we proceed with replacing it.
Passing it under emergency clause, right.
Thank you.
Can I, can I do, I'm going to be ilahu for the moment. Can we try to get a gas-efficient police cruiser?
My understanding is they'll want exactly what they just received.
Ford escapes?
Ford escapes is fairly small. No, it's, it's, no, it's not the Charger, I'm sorry, it's out, out there.
But that was adopted under ilahus, so.
It was, I mean, it's deemed, it's not, you know, but it is something that they can also use in pursuit at the same time. And as the police chief likes to remind me, his division has a hybrid vehicle, they have the DARE hybrid Prius now, so. And his car, correct, the chief's car, so. This is what they found, they're, what they determined was a good marriage. I believe Councilman Reisner sits on the Green Fleet Committee and could speak to that.
Well, a couple of things came out of it. This cruiser is very old, and it would have been scheduled for replacement next year. The, unfortunately, it hit a deer and totaled it, so the decision was made to switch the car that was going to be replaced this year, which was slightly older, with this one, so it's actually in the rotation schedule for it to be replaced. Has well over 100,000 miles on it. Gas mileage was, didn't really have gas mileage anymore. So, in terms of the Green Fleet, if, whatever, this new car that you're talking about, I believe is going to have the, what do they call the, oh, some sort of boost where it gets better gas mileage, the name escapes me right now.
EcoBoost?
Yes, yeah.
EcoBoost.
Yeah. They, the discussion always gets back to hybrids and all electrics and so on, and it keeps coming back to, how do you put all that in a, in a vehicle that has to hold a couple of prisoners in the back, maybe, has to have a cage, has to have all kinds of life support equipment for emergencies? It's going to be idling most of the time, rather than actually going, doing high-speed chases like in the movies. So, at the moment, there just doesn't seem to be a vehicle out there that really blends all that together as a hybrid. You know, I, I drive a hybrid myself, I'd love to have that, I'm always bragging about it, but, you know, in terms of public safety and officer safety, I have to yield to their expertise. If they, if they say this is what, that's available, and it's the best they can get, then I'm really in no position to argue with them about it. And any rate, it's going to certainly boost the gas mileage of the fleet, because we certainly have to get rid of cars that has over 100,000 miles, so we need a, those have to go, there's no question about it. This is, this is the right step, so, if we could get two, I'd recommend it, but I don't think, the money's not there?
You'll probably find it, but I want to leave some reserves on things.
Right, I understand.
We've got surprises that will come out, I'm sure.
Member Patterson?
I, I too, kind of want to echo both what Member Fall and what Member Reisner was saying, in that, you know, I, I'm always very concerned and cognizant over the Green Fleet, however, by the same token, it is an aged Crown Vic, which is a gas guzzler, and the other thing, too, that in the conversations that I've had with Chief Pyle, as technologies do advance, it'll certainly be on the radar for a more efficient vehicle, but we've got a fleet of, of how many vehicles, you know, police cruisers?
Seven right now. It's seven, but it's down to five is the problem, with this one out.
And that's a, I mean, we have a force that, you know, doesn't have the luxury of having several different divisions where they can, like a lot of larger cities, have several eco-friendly vehicles, and they're going around, you know, doing, there is no routine citation, but they're doing things that they don't, you know, necessarily have to be in, in high pursuit, where we do need a vehicle that is pretty much a one-size-fits-all vehicle, so.
And there are only three take-home vehicles in that division, which are the chief, the captain, and the canine, because the canine, as you know, is equipped for canine.
Any other comments?
No.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I might just add that perhaps future councils will be discussing the Tesla Model S, which is all-electric. Has a range of, has a range of 300 miles. Yeah, it's only, it's only around 70,000 to 90,000.
I don't think it'd fit all the equipment either.
No, they're pretty big, they seat six, seven?
Tesla?
Yeah, the Model S. Yeah, not the, not the little splister.
Well, I have a Chevy Volt, and it does not seat six.
The battery counts as three.
The battery counts as a large group, yes.
We have a motion to accept ordinance 112-13 under suspension of the rules. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ordinance is accepted. Do you have anything else from council members? We have a, we need a motion to accept the auditors' financial reports, which were submitted for the month of July. Do we have a second on accepting the auditors' report?
Second.
A second, okay. All those in favor of accepting the auditors' reports for July 2013 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The auditors' reports are, are accepted. Member Patterson, you were going to talk about Disabilities Commission?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to move to approve two new appointments to the Commission on Disabilities.
Second.
Thank you. The two individuals, the, to give a little bit of background, there are nine appointed members to the Commission on Disabilities, 11 total with the mayor and a city council member. There are two individuals who have come forth saying that they would like to become members of the Commission on Disabilities, two vacant seats, currently two vacant seats. The first one is Luther Hasley. Luther was on the 317 Board for several years, as well as Campus Ministries Board. He has been attending the meetings for the Commission on Disabilities for a good six to eight months, I believe, so he's been an active member already, but just not a seated or appointed member. The second individual is Darrell Purdy. Darrell has also been attending the meetings, I believe, for almost a year, if not longer. Darrell's current position is with Ohio University, he's the Assistant Director to, for employee accommodations and campus access. He's also the founder and president of a nonprofit, which is Life Dreams International Foundation, which is a foundation that was set up to help individuals seek holistic treatment for cranial facial deformities of different types. So he's been a very active member for many years, over 25 years, he's been working with individuals with varying disabilities, and so therefore, I would like to nominate both Luther Hasley and Darrell Purdy to the two vacant seats.
We have a motion and a second to appoint these gentlemen to the Disabilities Commission. All those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
We have approved this, these appointments. Do we have any citizens who wish to speak to us? I'm sorry? Oh, okay.
I just want to, under an announcement of business, our previous ordinance having to deal with the Green Fleet, we need a private, non-elected citizen to also be on our Green Fleet Committee, it's in the ordinance. So far, we do not have a citizen who is, is sitting in on our meetings, so I would, if anyone knows of someone who would be interested and qualified and has the time to meet quarterly here at City Hall, every, I think we're trying, trying to do every third Thursday. They're needed, it's mandated by the, by our ordinance, so. Anybody knows anybody, I've approached a couple people, and they said, no, they're not particularly interested, they don't have the time, but.
And if somebody out there is interested, should they call you?
They could contact me, or Debbie, yeah.
Debbie Lauter in the council, in the council office?
Or anybody.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, contact us, not a big deal.
Good point.
Anyone in the audience interested? See? Thank you. In all seriousness, this is, I believe, an important committee, and it should have public participation.
Could you remind everybody how often they meet?
We're now meeting once a quarter, we were meeting every month, that was so that the police department could get a grant, they were required to meet every, every month to discuss it. We're past that now, so we're back to the quarterly system, so.
During the day, during the evening?
It's usually 10, 10:00 in the morning.
But we provide, move it if needed.
Right, we're flexible, so.
We have a notice here from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control, I think all of us have heard about Texas Roadhouse coming to East State Street. There's a new designation for a restaurant such as this, D5I, dining and alcohol available. And if any council members or anybody watching this tonight, there will be a hearing about this, and responses need to be postmarked or registered by September 30th. Do you have anything that you wish to say, yea or nay regarding this restaurant coming? Again, do we have any citizens who wish to speak?
Are the committee meetings scheduled for next week, or?
Do you have a planning and development committee?
Finance and personnel.
Finance and personnel.
I don't think we need to do, do we need to do transportation?
I don't know yet, can we reserve that right as we go through the week?
Just. Transportation.
And we probably have some other issues to talk about, just in general, so. 7:00 in these same chambers. Mayor Watt?
One of the other things that Councilmember Patterson brought up, he was at the International Town Gown Conference earlier this summer, is to put a bid in to have the international conference meet, well, I'm bringing it up so, so I don't have to do it all. There's actually an application to put a bid in to have them meet here in Athens for the 2015 year. Actually requires a committee to be put together, a theme to be devised, and all done before the end of September, I believe. If you are interested in actually participating in this, and again, this is, we are a membership of a town gown organization, you went and attended one of these meetings, we have some unique processes that are, are of interest, we could, and it would also bring people here to see what it looks like when we have the CAs, the J-PAC, and
That's great.
And the other organizations out there. So these are things to think about, if you're willing to be Shanghai-ed into it, or whatever term you want to call that, enlisted, press gang, or whatever, contact me or Steve, and we'll try to get some members from the university side as well. We had that discussion with Dr. McDavis, but again, it's going to take more than just a discussion at this point. Do you want to add anything?
I just do, it's, the proposal has to go forward, or the bid has to go forward by September 25th, so that kind of gives you an idea. And, and also, the conferences are usually attended by somewhere between 300 and 400 individuals, so it just seemed to me as a natural. Again, having attended the Buffalo Conference this year for 2013, I, when I saw the bid go out, I did reach out to the program director of this year, and it's typically been held in larger cities, but they're fully aware of smaller communities and have always kind of wanted to have one there, so it was, wasn't any hand-tipping, but it was interesting to hear.
When do they meet? What, what time of the year?
It's usually the first weekend in June that it occurs. Last year, it was June 3rd through the 5th. And the venues, the venue I attended, anyway, was it, it was a hotel on the University of Buffalo's Southern Campus, so the venue was pretty small and tight, and again, knowing, as many of you do, that we have a number of very suitable venues throughout the city. as many of you do, that we have a number of very suitable venues throughout the city, again, it just seemed like a natural, and with the go-bus, you know, in terms, I kept thinking of transportation and whatnot, so I approached the mayor about it.
It's an opportunity to network and find out what other cities are doing, universities, town gown relations we're doing, I mean, sort of sending everybody to Buffalo.
Sure.
The other way is bring them here, and it's, it's a ways off, but we, I could probably, I could put some energy towards it, but I know it's going to be more than just me and Steve Patterson here, so that's why I'm, I'm reaching out, because, again, we could have some, somebody would show up with some wonderful ideas, or they may give us a medal and saying we're doing the best that they've ever seen. We're probably somewhere in between, but this, this is an opportunity.
Thank you.
You ready, Joe? Thank you.